Call Village and North FondleX Board of Trustees meeting to order Monday, June 1st. Due to the state of emergency related to COVID-19, the Village will have limited seating in the boardroom. In addition to the board meeting being available on cable, channel 980, you are also able to dial in and listen to speak through the phone. If you would like to do so, please dial 920-322-6120 between 5:45 and 5:55 on the day of the meeting. Real call of officers.
Duffy.
Here.
Morning. Streeter.
Here.
Price.
Here.
Will.
Stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Anyone have any announcements?
Just a reminder, just to turn on the microphones and put them up close.
All right. President's Business and Staff Reports. Administrator.
Right now, it's the time of year that probably will be the next board meeting we'll be approving all the cigarette and alcohol and non-intoxicating beverage licenses for all our establishments in town. So, it's a lot of paperwork getting prepped for that. I don't think we're going to do the onsite inspections this year because of the COVID. We normally go into those buildings and do a bunch of inspections there because they've been the same for a number of years. I think we're going to not do that this year because of the obvious reasons. We also, I've started meeting with department heads again in person. We had been kind of just meeting through phone conversations and that, but we're starting to meet again like we normally had for our staff meetings, which normally were every two weeks and we're doing every week right now to just kind of keep everybody up to date on what's going on with the COVID and all the departments at least getting back together and talking about what's going on. Also, if you saw in the news last week, there was $200 million allocated to local governments for COVID-19 response in the state of Wisconsin. The state of Wisconsin allocated the money. A hundred and ninety million of that went to local municipalities and what they did is a calculation based on population, a number of other things. And the Village of North FondleX allotted amount is $84,000. What that means is we can apply for up to $84,000 for COVID-related expenses. Now, at this point, we don't have a lot of details on what that means. I, you know, initially looking at where we're at, I don't think we're going to be anywhere near that amount, so I don't think we're going to go over that amount. But we'll certainly maximize whatever we can. It doesn't look like lost revenue for, except for maybe the EMS service, they've already been able to claim some lost revenue. Lost revenue for us, I don't think is going to be a claim, able to be claimed as far as like say, community center rentals and things like that. But it kind of exploring through that and then trying to figure out, there's also the FEMA one I talked about, so we just got to kind of figure that all out. There's a lot of, a lot of stuff to figure out there. So, that was late, later last week, so I haven't got dug into that too much yet. It sounds like the way it'll work is sort of a price or a cost tracker online with the state that you'll be putting, submitting your expenses and then at some point they'll say yes or no and, you know, as you keep incurring expenses, you put them into the system and they're going to approve or not approve those. So, I'll keep the board up to date on that. Other than that, Darren, if you want, as long as you're here, you could give a real quick weekly update. I asked Darren to be here because of some other agenda items tonight, so put him on the spot.
Yeah, just to kind of update what DPW has been doing. Probably most of you have seen the sidewalk through the park where the Bourne Learning Trail is going to be. We picked up the signs late last week. We're going to sit down and look at what we should do for posts, for the, for the posts that the signs are going to get mounted to in there. One thing, utility-wise, we've had a, we had a main break last winter up on Minnesota Avenue and when we prepped it to pour the concrete, it just was seeping water. So, we had Wisconsin Real Water Association come in with a correlator and along with our listening device, we've come to the conclusion that there's not a leak, it's just water underneath the street that's forming in the excavation that we have right there. So, you're going to see that get poured with concrete in the next week. With the resignation of Brian Goldofsky, we've been doing some cross-training with a couple of the guys, getting them more up to speed with operating the sweeper and we're going to have one guy out in the garbage truck as a backup operator, just to kind of get those guys more, up to more speed with some of the equipment, which will eventually move them up from a crewman one to a crewman two and one of them from a crewman two to a crewman three. That's all based on their capabilities of running equipment and how proficient they are with them. And currently, we're, we have advertisements out for crewman position to fill the vacant Brian Goldofsky position and with Dave Goldofsky retiring, we have something we'll talk about later here, but then we've been advertising for a crewman three position to help in the utilities also.
Hey Darren, do you know, when we did the sidewalk in Village Park, did, did, did you change like that elevation so there isn't as much like water standing there?
Yep. All grades were shot on that. It should drain much better. We're actually going to budget for a drain line right along that first baseline fence all the way out to the outfield and tie into a catch base in there.
Oh, good.
To help drain the wetness of the, of the field itself.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Brian, I got to ask you, what level was he at?
Crewman three.
He was a three. How many trees will he have?
Oh, well, Abbott's is four. Let's see. Rabidu, Goldofsky, we're both threes. Bedraki was a three, is a three. So, three crewman threes.
You're talking about cross-training, mixing up the twos?
Yep. Kevin Gruber, Kevin Gruber is a two. John Schalk, who we just hired first of the year as full-time, is a crewman one.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Darren. Any other reports from any other departments?
This may be updated because Darren was just talking about Public Works. The question came up last week about waste management and it was, there is an increase. There is more garbage being produced. It is pretty typical at this time of the year to see that, but this year is a little bit higher. So, I think you're maybe on to something that with everybody being home, that there wasn't uptick, so.
Is that it, Nick?
Yep. Thank you.
And is there a library board meeting this week?
Mm-hmm.
On the 3rd?
Yep, on Wednesday.
Was it six o'clock?
Yep.
If anybody's interested in that, I mean, that's an open meeting.
Yes.
As usual. Yeah.
I think they're allowing call-in.
Yeah, someone is going to call in. I don't know what number she had, so maybe they could call you if they wanted to get the call-in number.
Yep. Cool. All right. Thanks, Ann.
Consent Agenda, approve the minutes of the following Village Board Meeting from the 18th of May and approve invoices and authorized checks to be drawn on the respective funds as indicated. General Fund $7,684.61, $61 cents. Library Fund $43.45. EMS Fund $378.92. Capital Projects $93,877.26. Water Department $1,565.2. Waste Water Department $158.73. Storm Water Fund $45.45 for a grant total of $103,752.44. What is the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
You got a second?
I'll second that motion.
I got a motion by Will, signed by Price, to approve the consent agenda as read. Are there any questions? Mike?
I've got one and I can't find it right now. I have paper to have it. It was a previous employee that we were paying some insurance benefits for.
Yep.
I don't need the name, but I thought that was all done. I thought that there was only a short period of time we're doing it. I'm surprised to see that there.
So, the, yeah, so that employee pays, they, they, they still pay for their own insurance and dental insurance is what that was related to. And the Village got a reimbursement from March and April from our dental company because of nobody being able to use a dentist. We got a premium, we got some of that money back.
Nice.
And we thought it was only fair that that person received their benefit, what they paid 50% back or whatever the, what percentage was, so we paid them their, their portion of it back.
Are we supplementing some of his?
I don't believe so.
Okay. I thought that was all.
I think so. I think it's done.
Yeah. I don't think we're supplementing anything, but he is still on our plan and paying for it himself.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does make sense. I was just kind of.
Yep. Good question.
I thought it was, I had another question too. I didn't get a chance. That's why I said I had paper and I marked it off, but I don't see it, so I'm going to miss out on it.
The only other thing I'll mention, as long as, on the last, on page eight or page four on the top, at page eight in the bottom of the packet, the last charge on here is the, in the description, it says sales tax and that usually would raise a red flag. And government, it's actually missed, that's not in there correctly, it was for shipping. So, I just wanted to make a note of that. I know I did that on the sheet, Mike, that I gave to you.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'm good.
All righty. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Administrative. Number one, discussion and possible action on adding a third flagpole at Yellowstone Trail Park and the cost associated. I believe this one's Chuck.
Right. I'd ask to have this out of the agenda. A couple of years ago, the North FondleX Optimists Club had ran a program to try to come up with a Village flag and it turns out that their effect, their intent of going through the school and the kids to try to come up with suggestions didn't really work out and they still, I think, fell back on the fact that if you look at our business cards, there's kind of a wavy shaded blue design on there, which is what they had decided would be a typical or a good Village flag, of which the Optimists would pay for having. And then they approached me to see if the Village would be willing to put up a third pole at, somewhere, you know. At first, they thought maybe where the Village Stone is on the corner of Winnebago and Prospect, but then I think it really would be the best if we do go ahead with a third pole to put it just behind the two poles that are on Yellowstone Trail Park. At first, I think Nick or somebody had looked into the cost, maybe even Darren, it was probably close to $3,000 for a flagpole. I think the Optimists had come back and we talked a little bit and I'm not sure how much would actually reach the board is that maybe we could share the cost of 1,500 each. So, that's kind of, first of all, my first question to the board, if they still would be on board with doing something like that. But I'll also add that because of the COVID-19 and the fundraising that is being done by the Optimists, we have a football pool, we have the Padkick Day in Fall. If that doesn't happen, we're going to have to really look at our expenses for 2019, '20 to see if we even want to go ahead with it this year. We've got a board meeting coming up this Thursday where we're going to bring and talk, talk about it a little bit, talk about our expenses and what our revenues would be for this year. But I thought maybe I could at least say if they do want to go ahead with that portion of it, I'd like to get the feeling of the board if they'd be willing to still go ahead with, say, half of the flagpole put in at Yellowstone Trail Park. It'd be about $1,500.
And Chuck, you said the cost of the flag is covered by someone that had requested some money for that?
Good point. Charlie Posino had passed, he was a proponent of this and really was pushing for it and he had passed a good year or so ago and I kind of thought, nobody's bringing it up, so I wasn't going to bring it up, but then somebody said, hey, what's going on with that? You know, and everybody's still anxious to try to do this just in memory of Chuck Bow, you know, or Charlie Bow. And so, thanks for asking.
Sure. Yeah, we'd appreciate that.
So, just, so the, the, the Optimists is, will pay for the cost of the flags?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
For forever, so to speak?
Yes.
Okay.
I would say so.
Ann?
Didn't you mention we could fly two flags on one pole the other day? Is that?
Well, I didn't look too much into that, you know, and I was thinking more about that. You know, I, I think the United States flag to me still looks more distinguished if it's a lower, you know, and putting a third pole up there would probably be, I think it's a rule that the United States flag should be a little higher, so maybe that would be a taller pole than the other two that would have the state flag and the Village flag on there, so.
Could we see, I guess, what the flag's going to look like? Do you have something?
Does it have the business card?
It's right.
Well, just right up here. That's right there, yeah.
Also, it would look like that.
But it also says a great place to live.
Work and play.
Work and play.
Like on the stone.
Yep. Yes.
Yeah. So, it's all coordinating over in the corner there?
Yes. Yeah.
So, Mike.
The 3,000, is that an install price or that just a flagpole? That's probably just a flagpole.
I think the Village, Village usually installs the poles.
That's what I'm saying, because that's, those poles are expensive, so we're already, we're already going to pay the cost.
It was about $3,000 for a 30-foot pole.
And then we probably got some concrete and some labor.
And then the rest would just be bill of labor.
Right.
Anything else, Mike? Any boss, anybody else have any questions? Nick?
So, just Chuck for clarity, like as far as the timing of what the Optimists Club is looking for, is this something that could wait till budget discussion or is it something they want to act on this summer?
Well, like I said, I have to wait to see what Thursday's meeting goes. You know, if they give the go-ahead to go ahead and, you know, ask the Village to do it, it could happen next year. I mean, that's not something, I mean, we've waited two years. It's just a matter of now we have a plan in place and maybe a timeframe.
Okay.
John?
Darren, does the cost of the pole keep going up?
I haven't checked into them lately, but that was when we were looking at putting them behind the stone at 101 Winnebago. It was the last time I looked at the price.
When was that?
It was last year.
Yeah. Year ago, year and a half ago. My price still goes. Chuck? I'm sorry, John. No, just the thing was, I would like to know what the cost of that pole, what's going to be and then is it the Optimists' intent in the cost share 50/50?
Yes.
So, it's clear, whatever that cost is, it's 50/50.
That was the intent.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one, just so I'm clear. You're looking at putting it between and behind the existing two poles there?
Whatever your recommendations would be, I would have thought that's maybe what we do, but, you know, they're close enough to that sign, that electrical panel now that I personally feel it would be better behind, but that if it's better to be in front, that's...
Because then a new pole being center would be the American flag with the state flag to one side and then the Village flag to the other.
Yep.
Okay. Did you have something else, Chuck?
I know too, you know, with flags and maybe it's just a US flag that needs to have a light on it. I don't know if the state flag requires that or not, but I mean, that's already there too. So, I mean, that's, I think, would be another reason and to have a single flag over by the stone, I personally feel it would be a better cluster with them all together.
Mm-hmm.
Ann?
It would be an overkill almost, kind of, too, to put that flag by that stone too, because it's always sort of the same. But we had, we talked about this at budget time, but it didn't make it into the budget? Is that?
I don't think we ever, no. It's not.
I think at that time, we weren't quite sure and you thought it really would go ahead. There's enough possibly money in that budget to just afford it as an expense.
Yeah, I mean, my recollection is, is it was not put in the budget. I think it was discussed at the board and I don't think there was ever a decision, definitive decision made, but I mean, I could dig back out the minutes and look through it, but I'm pretty sure it's not in there.
Okay.
So, I mean, we would have to budget for this regardless, so I mean, I mean, if, are you, are you just looking to see what the, like the board would support something like that or?
Yes. As mainly, yeah, sure. And if it has to wait till next year to run through a budget process, that's what I'll tell them.
Mike, did you have something?
Yeah, just, you know, a couple things. I mean, we, I feel we're coming to like budget time because we don't know all the costs right now and, you know, the COVID-19 thing has, I was, we're going to have a second outbreak. I mean, is everybody going to pay their taxes this year? I mean, I mean, right now, it looks okay, but I mean, so it's, one of the rates stays as it is and people are going to continue to pay the property taxes on time. So, I don't know, we don't know the truth, considering it either, so I'm more comfortable with the budget time.
Okay. Anybody else want to weigh in there? Nick?
I could just say that with the budget, I mean, it, it's up to the board's discretion anytime if we have extra funds available and we could put that in the budget at any time and we could prove an expense this year, even if it's not in the budget. But I think maybe if Chuck, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but at least maybe you're looking to make sure, to look at this and say that the, but, but the board is not against it depending on if it works out budget-wise, right?
Right.
Keep moving forward.
And I'm just getting a sense from this that people are kind of thinking that let's wait and see how it goes and like Mike's saying, wait till budget time. And I'm fine with that. Again, don't feel that we have to, I'm trying to demand that we do that this summer, but just to feel that, are you willing to share 50/50, the cost of this when we can?
I'm willing to make sure, but they might change and they might have a Padkick Day and they might have some other kind of too. Would that change the Optimists' thinking at the time or do we have some more?
I think, you know, like I said, they've waited a couple of years on it. I mean, there's nobody stamping their hands on the table saying to do it now. I think what I'd like to be able to give them is some satisfaction that the fact that the board is okay with that 50/50 when we can do it, which may not be this year.
So, are we making, I mean, you're looking for a agreement to say, yes, we would do it. We're not against it, I like that, but we're not against it, but I'm saying, you know, we may do that commitment.
I, I'm not sure I feel. Well, again, I'm almost, being on the board, I'm reluctant to even make a commitment, more or less saying we support it and will, we'll do what we can when we can. You know, I mean, if things go fine, there's a good chance it would happen next summer, but if things go south on us, we may not be able to, so again.
John?
How's this changed from the time before that the board said they were willing to look at it, you know, you said looked at it last year and now it's back again, considering during that time period, what has happened, that it's brought back up again. Obviously, it's not there.
Sure.
But was there not a level of commitment? It sounded like it wasn't at the, it wasn't in the budget, but again, there's accounts that you can always draw from. I mean, there's a fund balance, the one-time deal, so you can look at, but I'm just wondering, you know, what brought that point where kind of, what was the sticky point?
I, I'm going to guess that it's more on the Optimist's side than the Village's side, that at that point, they were still going through the design and everything else and where they possibly suggest putting it. So, I think there was a little wishy-washy on that part where I think now, you know, we've got the design, we've got a possible 50/50 that they said they'd be willing to do. And we actually, I think, put in the Optimist's budget like $1,500 for that, not counting the flag part of it, but that, again, that's all up in the air because of the fundraisers.
Thank you.
If I, just maybe to wrap this up, if I can make a suggestion, I think at the point that the, the Optimists Club decides that they want to move forward with that, I think it would be appropriate that they come and present it to the board.
Okay.
You know, and the, the flag and, and ask for it. I think that would be helpful for us too, for the board, to make that decision, I think.
See what the final product is and all that?
Sure.
I think that would be helpful.
See what, like a rendition of the final product and all that stuff.
Sure.
Were there any financial issues?
Yep. I, I'm sure that will.
That's just my suggestion, you know.
I mean, I don't think we even need to take a vote on it or anything. That's, that's good on you for what, that you guys, so thank you for that.
Anything else, Chuck, on that one? Okay. All right. So, we'll just move on. Item one. Item number two, discussion and updates on COVID-19 and Village operations.
All right. So, I handed this, this was on your desk before you got here. There's three pages. The first page is kind of the outline again of a real quick run-through of where we're at. As discussed last time, we did close the pool for the summer. I did the press release, I think I sent it out to the board that following day. I know I sent it out to the board the following day. We put it on Facebook. It might have been two days later because we notified all the guards first. So, the parks, we opened the baseball diamonds.
I did, right after that happened, I think Milwaukee came out and announced all their schools too. Is that correct?
I don't know about Milwaukee. I know Oshkosh, several of them.
Wapon kind of, I think, they're opening?
Yep. As far as I know.
And Green Bay's opening a little bit, but majority of them are closed.
Yep. We did open the baseball diamonds. I had mentioned that was maybe more the most, I don't want to call it urgent, but maybe the most pressing thing at the time. People wanted to get practices started and I had mentioned this, a lot of the baseball diamonds were open. We did open those. We removed the bleachers. We've been talking to the leagues. The league is, the leagues have been very, very receptive to whatever we've been asking them. They've been very good about providing the rules for their players and parents and they asked, they, we talked to them about removing the bleachers and they were in favor of that, so we removed the bleachers. And they're basically telling their parents, bring chairs so you can sit apart from each other and they're having the kids not in the dugout space, sitting next to each other. Along those lines, on the 26th, the City of FondleX pretty much opened everything. They opened their parks, their playgrounds, their pavilion, their indoor pavilion, their outdoor shelters for rentals and all that. So, we started getting some questions because of that and asking about, you know, I have the park reserved in July for a graduation party. Is it going to be available? And with that and then talking with the city, we, we, we think it's in our best interest at this point. What we're proposing is opening the playgrounds, or what I'm planning on doing is opening the playgrounds tomorrow, the tennis courts, the basketball courts, pretty much most of the park facilities except the shelters and the concession stand. So, as of tomorrow, and I've included the, the signs here that we'll be placing on the playgrounds and on the restrooms, the restroom, I didn't mention the restroom, also the restrooms. Also been a lot of questions about the restrooms and we were, we are prepared to open those. We're going to put this, I'll let you guys read it, put this on the door. The playgrounds, the playgrounds are just really impossible to sanitize, so it's kind of play at your own risk and recommending, you know, use your own sanitizer and please, and both of these, if you're feeling ill, stay home and don't go in the bathroom. Darren has some, some, for the Public Works, has some, a new, you know, material or spray, sanitizing spray that they're able to go into the bathrooms every morning and they're going to sanitize the whole thing every morning. They always go there anyways in the morning and clean them up. This will, is just a little bit extra. It's pretty much the same process. They'll just be spraying it with a chemical that's very safe for people to touch and same thing on the weekends, weekend mornings, they'll be taking care of that. John, do you have a question?
Yeah, just on the bathroom.
Yep.
Note, it sounds like baseball, softball, they're all, all open to any suggestions. Have you thought about having the adults help with the cleaning of the bathrooms? I mean, to alleviate from our staff having to go in, because cleaning-wise, you said it's safe for people to use, just a quick wipe-down, that way it saves us time, or are you still planning on having them go anyways?
So, most of, sorry to interrupt, but most of the time, we're doing this in the morning and most of the time the baseball, and that's not a bad suggestion, I'll reach out to them when they're done with it, maybe at night, that they go in there and clean it up. We'll still go in the morning and clean it up. It's, we do that every morning anyways, they're there cleaning the bathrooms every morning. That's, in a normal year, we do that. They normally hose them down, and this is just an additive they're putting on the end of that hose that's gonna spray it down, right? Darren, am I saying that right?
Yeah, it's a bleach-based cake that goes in a dispenser, that goes on a garden hose, that will wash things down with, instead of using clean water, like water in a sprayer like we used in the past, this will sanitize much better.
So, with that, it really isn't adding much to us what we normally would be doing anyways.
It should actually save us time cleaning bathrooms with this sanitizing spray.
Is there any questions about those, those items? Yep.
Can you give any feedback, which really I'm implausible, did you get any?
Yeah, actually, I would, yeah, we did. We had, I would say, more supported it than didn't support it, and the, the few, you, you're gonna have that with everything, but they weren't, nobody called. It was, it was Facebook comments that, you know, and it's easy to do, you know, on Facebook. But we did have, you know, several people contact us and tell us that that's the right decision, and we did, we did. I would say the majority of the contacts were positive.
Are the tennis courts and pickleball courts regulated differently than tennis courts over by the park? Because they were open before this, they've been open for a couple of weeks now, so it must, the school must have opened.
It's a school.
Yes, okay, so they take care of that separately?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. So, that, that, yeah, and that, we'll put these signs that, basically the playground signs are open, you know, it's gonna kind of be the same sign, except it might say basketball hoops are open, so we use the same type of the sign. Moving on then, so then we've got the shelters, the concession, the concession stand, I'm just gonna, there, I've been talking with youth baseball and youth softball, and as of right now, baseball for sure is not planning on opening concessions. I haven't heard from softball, but I suspect that they also are not. If that's the case, we won't even open the concession stand, I'm a little reluctant to do that anyways for obvious reasons. But the shelters, so the rentals for, like, Lemieux Park, um, um, Optimist Park, the shelter, the, the outdoor shelter at Village Park, what I'm, what we're planning on doing is having those available again on six fifteen for rental. Just kind of, a, kind of a phased approach to this, and, you know, that's a couple more weeks, we can reassess. But we do have, and part of the reason on that date is, we're, we're at the point now where people have canceled their reservations on the thirteenth or so, or the twelfth, or the, the fifth, because where we were four weeks ago, and they weren't comfortable keeping their reservation, even though they could've got their money back. But we don't wanna open it too soon after some people have canceled. So, um, we're looking at the fifteenth, which then, I don't think we had anything rented that week, because it was supposed to be North Fondue Fest anyways, so that was kind of shut down at Village Park anyways. But then we would open those up, we were gonna put the picnic, I mentioned the picnic tables were removed, did I mention that yet? We removed all the picnic tables. We'll be putting those back. We may not put as many back to try and keep it a little bit better spaced apart at those pavilions. And then the concession stand, as I mentioned, if they don't need it, we won't even open it. But that was maybe going to be also the fifteenth. Any questions about that? Moving on then, community center, right now, I'm just kinda looking at the calendar, July sixth just happens to fall on a Monday after the Fourth of July weekend. I'm kinda putting that out there. Court may be starting up about then, too. But that's one of those that I'm more nervous about than anything, because it's an indoor, you know, close proximity to people type of thing. So, we didn't have anything really in there all of June, so June, July looks like a good time to maybe open that back up. But again, we'll, we'll look at this stuff every week or so and just see, watch the CDC's recommendations and, but a lot of them are seeing open now. The senior center portion of that, I don't, I don't see, just because of the, the CDC's recommendations with the, the age of the people that use that, and the possibly higher, higher risk. I don't, I'm not suggesting that we're opening the senior center at that time at this point, but the community center possibly, so. The municipal building, you know, I just, I, I'd like to reassess in a couple more weeks. It's just, we really don't have a lot of people that can't do what they need to do when they come here right now, and, and, um, I don't see the urgent need to open this building at this point, 'cause they are able, and what we've started doing now, more so than maybe what we've done in the, in the last month or two, is if somebody comes to the front door and hits the buzzer and talks to us and really can't take care of what they wanna take care of, we will allow those people and come to the window and pay with their cash or whatever on a very, very limited basis. 'Cause then we, you know, because there are those certain people that have the hundred-dollar bill, and they wanna pay eighty dollars on their water bill, and they don't wanna pay the extra twenty, so that's, that's what I'm talking about, they show up with their hundred-dollar bill and they wanna pay. So, we are starting to maybe let those people in and deal with those. And then, once court opens back up and they start doing court again, which is probably gonna be in July, then we'll have to reassess that for sure. But I, I think we're just gonna do another two weeks and reassess, and kind of play it by ear.
Are we still gonna defer late fees and credit card charges?
So, as of right now, the late fees are still deferred based on state guidelines for all of the utilities. At some point, that is coming to, to an end, and I don't know if anybody, well, you wouldn't have seen it unless you got one. But, um, we normally would send off shut-off notices for late water payments, and this last time, we, we didn't do that, we can't shut people off. But we did send a reminder letter, um, just letting them know that, kind of encouraging them to do what they can, because at some point, these rules will go away, and we don't want people to get too far behind. And we don't wanna shut people off. And so, we've had a very good response with those letters, and a lot of people have called, and, and, you know, they, a lot of people have stories too, right? I mean, they, they're out of work, and we understand that. So, I don't foresee that going away anytime soon, the credit card fees. And like I said, at some point, when we get to that later on here, we're, we're assessing how much that's costing us a month. Last month, I think I reported it was like two hundred and eighty dollars extra. I think we really need to consider just, just calling that business at, at this point, because it's, it's a, it's a great benefit for our citizens to be able to pay through credit card, and it's the cost of business nowadays, that maybe we just start absorbing that to our utilities.
Would that qualify for that eighty-four thousand?
I don't know.
Not much.
Worth a shot.
Payments through credit card?
We do.
Utility?
Yep, utility, building permits, we, we're doing everything now, yep. We started that, I asked you two years ago, so.
And you did, I was just waiving the fees.
We're waiving the fees for everything, credit card fees, yep, yep.
You know, some of the water bills are, you know, two, three hundred, what's that, three percent or something?
Yeah, two-point-seven-five, but that's, yeah, it was two hundred and, like I said, last, the, the month, the most busy month, it was about two hundred and eighty dollars more, so far.
Is it more efficient to have them pay by credit card?
It is, and that's why we talked, the cost of doing business, right? We don't have, they don't, a lot of, the, the, the one good thing that may come out of this, for, from that standpoint, is a lot of people have experienced the online payments now. And for, are you through PSN? And we talk about that, yeah, how, how much time does it cost for one of our staff person to take cash, make a receipt, all that stuff? When they come in the office, and then they, you know, they chat or whatever, I mean, that's fine, that takes time. But, yeah, if they're paying online, there, there's obviously less staff involved, so.
What about versus, uh, mail-in payment, is it easier than a mail-in payment? Or the same?
What do you mean by easier, from which, from whose standpoint, ours?
Yes.
From staff, from a staff perspective?
Yep.
It's much easier than a, than a mail-in payment, 'cause we have to do nothing.
Okay.
Really.
Yeah.
It's all taken care of.
The most cost effective ones, the ones that pay in my checking account, they're all...
Yep, it is, for sure. Yep. The checking account, yep. Anything else on that, municipal building? Alright, um, and then staffing, I mentioned last time, we did bring everybody back by, on May twenty-sixth. Everybody's working, um, from the office. On occasion, I may have to have one or two employees that just don't have daycare, and that's, you know, we let them work from home for a day or two, but it's not like it had been in the past, where we're keeping people away, so. Otherwise, I think that's pretty much where we're at with, with everything, unless there's questions about any other operations.
Darren can ask this question on the community center. Do we increase the outside air coming in that building, if we're gonna start putting people in there? I know it's gonna cost more money to condition that air, but do we, you know, I know at the present, we, we, some buildings will go a hundred percent outside air, but is there any thought of increasing the outside air coming in, air exchange?
We just haven't turned, the air conditioners are running to keep it fine and controlled in there. So, it's in auto mode, but we do recirculate the air all the time.
What I'm saying is, bringing outside...
It's to increase the outside air.
Bringing outside air, and sometimes it's ten percent, we increase it to twenty-five, thirty percent, to, to get more air exchange, to, to make it more of a healthy environment, especially with, maybe, that's something you might want to look into.
We'd have to talk to Eric Dick.
I'll look into that, 'cause it's...
Alright, thank you. Especially with courts and stuff. Courts and stuff like that, so, okay, thank you.
Can you give us an update on the court, like, what is going on with that?
So, yeah, and I, I, what I'll do is, I'll forward you an email that I just received today from Judge Jerry. This afternoon, he sent one out to kind of all the courts. There, there, there's a lot of rules and regulations and, and steps they have to go through as a court, through the state courts associ, not the court association, but the, whoever's in charge of that is, they have a bunch of rules they have to follow. And he just sent a long email out today about where they're at. They're likely going to be holding court in July, the way it sounds. But they're really encouraging a lot of different ways, obviously, of, of communicating for anything that doesn't have to be in person. But rather than me try to explain it, I'll, I think it'd be best if I just forward that email to you.
Okay.
'Cause I actually really haven't gotten through it all myself yet.
Okay, thank you.
I will forward that to the board tonight, probably.
Anybody, anybody else have any questions for Nick regarding, uh, the COVID village operations update? Seeing none, thanks Nick.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, need a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session for discussion of a personnel, of personnel under Wisconsin State Statute nineteen point eight five, sub one, sub C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Item one, certified plant operator, and item two, Lakeside Municipal Court Staffing.
Yeah, I'll second that motion, so you have a motion by, warning, second by Streeter, going into closed session for, um, discussion of the certified plant operator and Lakeside Municipal Court Staffing. Can I get a roll call, please?
Duffy.
Yes.
Horning.
Yes.
Streeter.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Will.
Yes.